You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the March 14th, 2023 meeting of the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access la port county dot org. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 7:01. Um, if we could all stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just an update, um, I'll be filling in and running this meeting for Dinah, our president. She is on, but she is virtually slash remote. So, um, I have all the agenda items that we're gonna be discussing and she will be able to, uh, give feedback on any of the key topics. Um, as, as by requirement and law, we do have three enough to make votes, enough for a quorum. Um, Dinah and Sam, who I will do a roll call in a few seconds, uh, will not be able to vote because they are not present. So with that said, I'm gonna do a roll call, President Dinah Dumbriz.
Present.
Vice President Michael Martinez here, President Ralph Fox. Sam Paxton.
Here.
Rich Young.
He's virtual, right?
Sam Paxton is virtual, yes.
Okay.
Rich Young.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Joan Lewis.
Here.
Attorney Brad Adamsky.
Here.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
Here.
Police Chief Bart Swistak.
Present.
Park Board President Dolly Millet.
Absent.
VZA President Matt Bowen.
Absent.
Building Commissioner slash Code Enforcement Officer Deb Chubb. I would say absent.
She's absent, okay.
Yeah. Flapray Administrator Ray Dumbriz.
He's absent.
Okay.
Or is he on virtual?
Dinah, is Ray with you? She's shaking her head.
No.
No, Ray's not, sorry.
Uh, Commission President Ralph Fox, present, we know that, and then website Samantha Arnold.
She is absent.
And what about Road Commissioner, same best for last.
That's good job, loves to do so much.
I don't do.
Road Commissioner Bob Sarkowski, President.
That's done by the President of the Council.
All right. So moving forward to number three, adopting the meeting agenda, has everyone had a chance to review the meeting agenda?
Yes.
Okay, I.
I have a question. When do you open the bids? It's not listed on here.
Well, that's why I'm gonna, it's number 10.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna move it up since we do have, um, Waste, uh, Republic Services on, so that's part of my adjustment. Does Rich, can Rich get a paper copy of the, uh, agenda by chance, Joan? Do you have one?
He's gone.
Do you have one?
This is from Friday.
That's the meeting minutes, that's not the agenda.
Well, it says it.
Does it?
No.
Well, I must have gotten carried away, it's meeting minutes, so now you're opening. Excuse me.
Just give me a few seconds while Rich gets his, uh, agenda items.
We do have one of those, in fact, you've got two in your packet because that's the third revision.
I went to them all and two.
I know I packed it, but then you must have took it apart when you.
All right, so I wanna make a, uh, we do have a representative from Waste, uh, from Republic Services on virtually, correct?
Jim.
Jim?
Yeah, uh, this is Doug Rogan, and we have Doug Rogan, Bob on as well.
Okay, and you guys, you gentlemen are both, uh, representing Republic Services?
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. Correct.
Do we have anyone from, uh, Waste Management on?
Evident.
Okay, so I make a motion, I'll, I wanna make a comment to move the refuse contract up to the, uh, to, what number is this gonna be? Uh, number six? Right after the reports for committees and officers?
Why don't you do it now because you advertised it for seven?
Okay.
Why make them wait? We always did it right after the roll call.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, move up the refuse contracts to, to, right after I get done speaking with the additional meeting agenda updates. Um, I also wanna add a public comment to, uh, bullet point number seven, the STR. Uh, so it would be seven A, public comment before we vote on the STR that is, uh, coming before us. Um, I also want to add reinstalling the town map under number 12 miscellaneous business, which is 12A. And Dinah and Sam, you can hear me correctly, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other updates, uh, Town Council members?
No. Rich, you got anything? I don't like the agenda.
Yeah.
Just a moment. No?
Okay, I need a motion to accept the meeting agenda with the updates stated.
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Got it, okay.
So you have.
Ralph?
And Sam.
Yep, correct.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. So with that, uh, we're gonna be moving forward with the closed refuse contracts or bids that were submitted from Waste, uh, from Waste Management Republic. The first one I'm gonna be opening is the Republic Services. And just a little background, everyone, that these were closed bids, so this is the first of our knowledge. See, please. I believe these are the slides. Give us a second while we try to get through this real quick. Perfect. All right, I'm gonna be, uh, reading the Republic Services, uh, pricing page, I hope that suffices. Um, verbatim, all three, uh, present council members, uh, have a copy, thank you for adding those copies, uh, to this packet. Um, refuse bid specification pricing page, March 13th, Town of Michiana Shores, Contract Extension. Dear Honorable Town Board, it has been our privilege to serve the Town of Michiana Waste Collection Service for many years. We sincerely appreciate your business. We hope that we have exceeded all of your expectations. Please see the below pricing for the response for the bid specifications for the Town of Michiana Shores. Starting April 1st, 2023 through March 31st, this is a three-year contract, starting April 1st to, uh, 2023 through March 31st, 2024, they will bill the Town of Michiana Shores at $13.39 per unit, times the 348 units that were identified within the town for a monthly, or for a monthly fee of $4,659.72. On April 1st, 2024, the second year through March 31st, 2025, the rate per unit increases to $14.06 per unit at the same 348 units for the town, which now increases the monthly rate to $4,892.88. The third and final year, which will begin on April 1st, 2025 through March 31st, 2026, the per-unit cost is raised again to $14.76 per unit at the same fixed 348 units for the town, which comes to $5,136.48 per month. We have on here an option year, April 1st, 2026 through March 31st, 2027, at $15.65 per unit at 348 units per town, for a fee, monthly fee of $5,446.20. Thank you again for your consideration and the privilege of serving the residents of Town of Michiana. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me at 219-916-3547. Sincerely, Jayne Metros, Municipal Services Manager, but we do have Republic on our call for any initial questions from our town members, uh, virtually and/or, uh, in person.
Okay, um, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, uh, my question, can you please tell me again the sum, the total for the number again, since I can't see it?
Um, let me add it up, do you want the, the per month or just the total?
Give me the whole total.
All right, give me a second.
I can just send it, see these guys. If that's appropriate.
That's fine. Ralph, uh, Ralph, well, I'm calculating this for you, is going to, uh, send this electronically as well for any other questions you may have.
Okay, and then I have another question, the contract, as you read, it says for 346 homes, what happens when, I know we had, um, I think there were two still under construction, so if the number of the homes in the contract changes, how does that affect anything?
Uh, you stated, uh, 346, this is for 348.
Oh, okay.
And the total that you asked for, Dinah, for the three years, I came to the total of $14,689.08 for the three years, with the option year being a fourth year at $5,446.20.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So Joan, what's our current, uh, contract, what are we trying to do?
It's, it's a, you get it every month, but I still don't remember exactly what it is.
Um, I reach out to Sam virtually, also any, uh, Ralph or, um, Rich, any questions or comments? Because if not, I will move forward to the Waste Management bid that is also closed.
I have no comments or questions, other than it'd be good to know what we're paying currently.
You're paying $4,003.26 a month right now.
Four thousand, I'm sorry?
Four thousand, zero, zero, three, dot, two, oh.
Okay, okay, thank you, Joan.
Rich, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, in the stuff that Joan gave me, did I see at first that Republic was offering one-year extension?
Originally, yes, but to make it fair to the other, uh, providers, we did three years. Um, essentially, there was a miscommunication, we cleared it up, hence the reason why we have three years now, so you can disregard that one year.
So the first year's a 16% increase of the current.
What was the first year of public increasing?
Um, for the new, for the cur, uh, for April 1st, 2023 through March 31st, 2024, we'll be paying $4,659.72 per month. And any other questions, council members? Okay, I'm gonna be opening up the Waste Management, uh, sealed bid as well. Just give me a second, uh, everyone, as I go through this pamphlet there, or this binder they gave us. All right, I believe I found it here, labeled compensation on page 23 of the binder. I'm gonna read it verbatim, some of it's a little, uh, wordy. Compensation, the contractor shall be paid for work performed under the contract pursuant to the dis, disbursement schedule set by the Clerk Treasurer pursuant to the bid accepted and determined by the Town Council. The number of drawing units at the present time is approximately 348, more or less. Should any territory be annexed to the town, a figure equal to the actual number of drawing units requiring service on the basis of a physical town made by the town shall be added to the contract and effective upon the date that such, such annexation is complete and final as prescribed in the applicable statutes of the State of Indiana. Waste Management provides each customer exceptional service at an outstanding value. Our goal is not to be the lowest-cost service provider, but to provide the most value to our customers through our assets, skilled employees, that can focus on safety, unparalleled customer service, and innovative technology, all while providing consistent quality service over the full life of the contract. When combined, these benefits allow the Town of Michiana Shores to rely on us for all Waste Management needs and save on your most valuable resource, which is time. The price per unit for Michiana Shores is $18.50, $18.50 all-inclusive. An 8% price increase cap year, cap will be, uh, issued for year two and year three. Bulk is standard bulk pricing up to three items for $35 prepaid and pre-scheduled by the residents. Was everyone able to hear that? That's on, uh, virtually?
Yes.
Dinah?
Yes, I'm sorry, I keep it muted, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
If you wanna look.
Michael, what was the per unit, 18?
$18.50, with an 8% increase for year two and 8% increase for year three.
So if I'm doing the math correctly, it's 6,438?
I'll take your word for it, but yeah, that sounds right.
348 units?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Any questions? Virtually or in person from the council members?
I do have a comment to make, but it has to do with something else. Actually, Deb is trying to get on the meeting, but, um, she gets no response, she said she was in the waiting room, Ralph?
Uh, yeah, I've been busy for the last five minutes, okay? Sorry, Deb.
Okay.
She is now admitted. So, uh, one of the things I'm trying to find in both of.
Yeah, go ahead.
What happens if we're unhappy? Uh, what are the, the terms if you decided, if they decide to cancel us, and we decide to cancel them, it was usually something like that, and I'm having trouble finding it in the first.
Yeah, it's not.
You can send us back.
Is it?
Uh, well, uh, I don't know if it's anything I would, uh, if we can cancel it, but I feel like, I would like to know that we can cancel it for some reason, we're really hanging.
I mean, I would say, take, take a few minutes to look at that.
Yes.
Excuse me.
Yes, Jim, he's up in the room. Jim Metros is on.
From Waste Management? That was, he's for Republic.
He wants to vote for them, though, don't you?
No. Specifically for, um.
Either one.
Okay. Hey, Jim. Jim?
This is Doug Rogan, yeah, this, can you hear me? This is Doug Rogan, bottom of Republic.
Yes, Doug, we can hear you.
Yeah, so just like in the, uh, previous contract we have, we also gave an example contract, if you look at item number nine on that, it has termination clauses in there for 30 days, if, if you got 30 days of written notice, if we don't rectify, then, then it kinda has like a little timeframe that goes down. So just like you had in the previous contract with this for the last three years, there are termination clauses, it's basically, you can't just call them and say, hey, we're done, you have to give them time to rectify a problem or an issue that it has, but there is a timeframe that kinda lays that out. Um, but, so in the example contract, it's under, uh, it's number nine, the example contract, uh, the bottom page, page 3010, and there's an entire paragraph that relates to a termination of a contract, and it's the same thing that we've had with you guys for the last few years.
Okay, I just moved on, I'm screwed because of prior contracts, I was nowhere, and, uh, there's a lot of material here, so I haven't quite found what they're describing yet.
It would probably be, this is Jim, it's prob, it would probably be easier to find it in the, uh, the one with the tabs on it, uh, there's actually a contract, a sample contract, under the tab that says contract.
This is it.
There you go.
Okay.
It'd be page 3 of 10 on that and item number nine.
Okay, good. Good found.
Any other questions? Council members, comments? Before we take it to a vote?
Well, if I'm understanding this right, we're saying the first year would be $18.50 for Waste Management?
Correct.
For a year.
Correct. And then with the 8%.
And then, 8% of that, that makes it almost 20. And then 8% of that, that makes it 21.58.
Yep, for year three.
21.58. In the first year, Republic would be charged less than $5 per month. In the second year, they would be charged almost $6 left, and in the seventh, uh, seventh year, third year, it's like $6.80 left. I've been around this government for a while now, we've had, in my opinion, very good success, success and satisfaction with Republic.
I agree.
Obviously, our lawyer will be taking a look.
If he asks me to.
If he asks me to.
Joan informed me I would only get some of that, didn't he?
Sounds pretty good, I think. But we've had very good luck, and the only thing I've read is, the job is your task. And Ralph, correct.
We gave him a nice gift.
We did, but I wish he wasn't in the back. Any of you who know our current refuse guy that's been around?
Yeah.
I bet he's right here.
So, so Rich, what are we saying there? What, what are you, what are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting that kind of ridiculous to pay that much more for a service we don't know over one that we know for.
Yeah.
We're very pleased with the service.
Right.
So.
Okay, so I need somebody to make a motion to pick a, uh, what do you call, a supplier? Is that right, Joan?
Contract.
A contract.
What, contract, okay.
Either Republic or Waste Management, somebody needs to make a motion.
I move that this Town Council accept the contract of Republic for these three years. And I'll second that. So actually, I would go further and propose that we go ahead and lock in the fourth year.
Did you hear that, uh?
No, I didn't hear, what did Ralph say?
Dinah and Sam, Ralph is, uh, we are moving forward with Republic, so continuing our services, but we want to look at the fourth option, the option year that was given to us on this bid sheet from Republic.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea, I like the idea of looking at that.
Okay.
Are we voting only for three years now, or we're voting for the whole four?
We can vote for four if it's allowed. Yeah.
Through the campaign, which, who made the motion? Well, even their fourth year is $3 cheaper than the other company in the first year, so, yeah, I think it probably will be.
All right.
Is there a timeframe to exercise the option?
I don't know, you guys, if someone can you, uh?
Yeah. Republic, is there a timeframe on exercising this fourth option year?
I apologize, I missed that question?
Uh, you have on your bid sheet an option for a fourth year, uh, for 2026 to 2027, is there a timeframe in which this expires?
So the option year is part of your bid spec, um, so basically, we apply to a three year, and then we just put in that fourth option year, and realistically, you can make that decision, you know, we would like to know at least, you know, 30 days in advance that you wanted to accept that, so you do not have to accept it at this time, that writing is valid for the three years and the option years, you can exercise that anytime up until, uh, March 31st of 2026, or until you would put out another set of bid specs.
And the price should be the same?
Yeah, you'd have a lock-in pricing right up until, uh, that time, um, obviously, it's good, we know, we always feel better, um, but it, yeah, unless you put out bid specs, um, that pricing is good up until March 31st of 2026, but if you put out bid specs, you know, to go out for bid again, which is obviously your choice, because this is an option year, and you decide to do that in January of 2025, then it would go out for bid. and you decide to do that in January of 2025, then it would go out for bid, and that option year would be null and void. And we would turn in different numbers at that point in time.
Well, since, I'm just making a comment now, since we're allowed to make a comment even between the motions. I think that it would be a good idea just to go with the fourth option right now, and we're all set for four years.
I agree. Do we need to make a new motion to add the fourth year, or are we good to go because it's all on the bid sheet?
Restate the motion.
Yeah, restate. Okay. I need a motion to accept the Republic Services bid sheet with the fourth option year included.
So make an amendment to that first motion that was made by Rich.
All right, I move that we go ahead and include the fourth option year into the three-year original cut.
And I'll second that.
Got it. Well, thank you, Republics-- Oh, yeah, sorry. So, but I would like to see all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes for the present town council members. All right. Thank you, Republic, for joining. Look forward to the next four years of services for you. Thank you for all the hard work up to this point and continued work as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Just thank you. We appreciate your business as well, and thank you, and hope you're here for the next four years, and we'll talk then. But thank you for everything.
Great, thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right. Moving forward to number five, the minutes. Approved minutes of February 14th and the February 24th executive sessions. Has everyone had a chance to review?
Yes.
Any comments? Any corrections?
I have comments.
Yes, Joan, go ahead.
They sent this out to everybody, and nobody noticed that at the top of it, it says agenda and not meeting minutes. Did you notice it? Or did I get-- What does it say on yours? Meeting agenda or meeting minutes?
It says agenda on mine.
Okay, well, just cross it out. Well, Dinah has to come in and sign it, so I'll just make that correction with page she signs. Rich noticed it was too late.
Both of them.
Yeah, you can't tell me at seven o'clock to get changes done.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
I have no comments or changes.
All right. I need a motion to accept the minutes with the adjustment of the title of that document.
I'll move. No, I'll second that.
Okay. And all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to number five, or six now. Reports from the committees, officers, and clerk treasurer. Invoices and claims. Ms. Jo Lewis.
Thank you. Let's start with the March 14th, 2023 vouchers. Quickly, we're in the floor. Town of Long Beach, five thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars for police protection. Michigan Shores Volunteer Fire Department, a hundred and five dollars for rental of the hall and our office. And Republic Services for four thousand three dollars and twenty cents for refuse services. Department of Water Works for water, add the garage, nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Baker Chili, I don't know why the computer separates this, but this one's not, but there's another one. Baker Chili, that was for their services for our annual financial report, one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Comcast for internet, a hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty cents. AT&amp;T Mobility, ninety-four dollars and eighty-three cents. Railbox for cable and adapters for our video system, twenty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. AD Voice, software for payroll, eighteen hundred dollars. Software for the fund, which is our financial fund, eighteen hundred dollars, and software for billing, which is our utilities, three thousand and thirty dollars. Jim McKay for professional services for the, he downloaded Microsoft Outlook and set up some equipment for us, a hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Brenda Heckman traveled to the post office in Pat, forty-five dollars. Fire protection, three thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixteen cents with the Michigan Shores Volunteer Fire Department, Department of Water for Kincaid Park, nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Myself for twelve dollars. Postage stamps have gone up again. I don't know if you're aware of that. I was not. I looked for it on the internet, paid books, it on the internet, and it was not right. So when I got to the post office, I had to add twelve, twelve dollars. Belson Outdoors, this is for the signpost, for the one signpost that the ghost checked in. We got, really got a deal on it because it took off almost three hundred dollars. It was supposed to be over eight hundred dollars, and we got it for five hundred and forty dollars. So we did real well on that. And a postal service, two hundred and forty dollars for rolls and stamps. For a grand total, two, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents.
Any questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve that, but it's expensive.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did Rich second it?
Yes.
Yeah, he did.
And three ayes, I believe.
Yeah. Please speak up. I'm Deb. I need to have a follow-up. So you have three ayes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I don't know if you guys want to start supplying--
Yeah, because I don't want to get in trouble by--
February additional vouchers. Lipstick, street lights, nineteen dollars and two cents. Electric for the garage, sixty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. Heat for the garage, a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. Holdulon repair, four, a hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. That was repaired to the 2016 Ford pickup. It looks like it was just general stuff. Then we have Chase Card Services for software for our Adobe, sixteen dollars and four cents for Microsoft, twenty-three dollars. Freeman Associates for legal for January, February, this is on the pro bono case, two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Global Engineering Land and Suburban. They helped us apply for the CCG, which is the Community Crossing Grant for local roads and streets. We apply, and hopefully, we'll get a grant. It costs thirty-five hundred dollars for the engineering and-- entering all the static into the computer. That's for total cost now of the additional voucher, seven thousand hundred and-- seven thousand, seventy-four dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Any questions?
I don't know if we accept the additional vouchers. I'll second that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Three ayes.
While you sign those, I'll read you some more. This is for the February payroll for Deb Chell. Grand total of-- three thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-one cents. This is everything transferring over from the payroll to the general. It's recorded on immediately when we do it. Do you have any questions? No.
I'll make a motion to approve those expenses.
Rich?
Aye.
All in favor?
Uh, no.
Three ayes. Get it set up here.
Yeah, no.
This one is for the February payroll taxes, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. I'm not going to read all of them. That was just for the one paid payroll.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll taxes.
Sir?
All in favor?
No.
And that's all I have.
Did we forget to approve the executive meeting? Yes.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the last one.
Do you need a second, Rich, to look at them?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice catch. Thank you, Joan Lewis.
I'm watching the secondary readings. Thank you.
And you said that was it for you, Joan, in terms of invoices?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, moving on to number seven, resolutions and ordinances. We have the Comprehensive Plan 2023 update.
Yeah, the planning mission approved the, the new proposed comprehensive plan for the last week. We do not think we should try to vote on this, Mike, like a full, or comprehensive one, which could provide input and vote on that. Essentially, we collected partners' information from all sorts of places and tried to roll that into the document, made a lot of updates to it. So primarily, I think this was on the funding chapter, the strategic management of the board. So it is available online. You can download a copy, and you can come in and, I'm sure Joan can make a copy for you.
Thank you.
Got it.
Got it.
But we will try to vote on it at the next meeting.
Perfect. And Rich does have a paper copy?
I believe it does.
Yep.
Okay. So we're looking to vote on this next, next town council meeting, Rich. So if any questions, reach out. All right, thank you for that. Number, moving forward, number eight, we have an STR permit for 412 El Portal. Amanda Marion?
Yep.
Okay. Before we discuss this, we have added seven A for any kind of public comment before we move forward on this STR permit request. Anyone in person or anyone virtually that wants to make a comment? Going once, going twice, sold. Okay.
I would make a point that Chris Wolf, who lives next door to these folks, did message me today and said that he was fine. He was good with the short-term.
And just to confirm that this was, these works and this process was in the works prior to the reported--
Oh, yes.
Okay. So let me go first. Thank you for packaging that very well. It was very easy to review. On the checklist, I saw everything that I needed in terms of requirements. The one thing that I did not see, and maybe it was missed, and/or Joan, maybe you can update, was there a copy of the check for the hundred and fifty dollars application fee? Was that ever presented to you?
Do you, I don't remember--
Yeah, I have the end deposit and she won't be able to--
Yeah, I don't remember.
It was quite a while ago, but I had it very first when I found it out.
Yeah, if you dropped it off, it's recorded, because we don't hold anything. And then I constantly forget it. I gotta keep other things. So I'm sure that you paid for it.
Okay.
Should we get a copy of the receipt and the file?
Yeah, we do.
The other comments that I have is based on the documentation that you gave, is that you're only allowed two parking spots per the drawing, so make sure we adhere to that because you are a violation of the STR agreement that you signed. Also, that based on the inspection with three bedrooms and one and a half bath, the max people in that house that can stay overnight is six people.
Yes.
Okay, so that would be a direct violation of the agreement that you signed as well. Always, just always make sure, because that's kind of, sometimes the issue is that things get out of hand quickly, and we just don't want any unnecessary calls or nuisances. And then the last thing, as, again, you've pretty much fit all the requirements, but I didn't look into it this much because it's not a requirement yet, is who is your point of contact in case of issues with your potential renters? Do you have one?
Yeah, we're both listed. On the wall and everything is the main contact. My sister also lives on the other side of 12, which you can see, so she's a contact. And my aunt lives in Grand Beach, so she all--
Got it. And just asking, because I saw the application, do you folks still live in Chicago off of Waverly, or--
Yes.
Okay. But you--
We're here, we're here like half the time, so.
But clearly, you have people in the area to come here.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
So I got lots of things I was gonna bring up. There is one thing, and I couldn't tell in photos, but we recently updated the noise warnings in town. Quiet hours for the whole town have been identified. And they, so you need to make sure that what you're publishing in the home--
Sure.
--matches what that new audience is.
Okay.
And the, the order is on the website.
Yeah.
So look for it. If you can't find it, contact somebody. But just, I, my guess is you probably have the old hours there--
Yeah.
--which are just past the sort of--
Yes. Well, we'll print out a new--
Just double-check it. It doesn't change a lot, but it does shrink it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I have no other comments or questions.
Rich, any questions or comments? Dinah and/or Sam, any questions, comments?
I have concerns about the fact that, you know, the two parking spots. I also just have concerns that that is, you know, a highly trafficked area. I mean, that is the entrance to the town, and about a lot of people will be through there, you know, so my issue to you is safety.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do have--
Oh, Sam, sorry. Sorry to cut you off. I didn't know if you guys wanted to speak to that, or--
Sure. Well, first of all, we're not planning renting out a town, because we're here like half the time. So it's only like once or twice a month, maybe. So, and we're gonna be very strict, too, about who we're allowing, you know, screening up for. Also, I do want to add two more parking spots in the next year. We're right in front of those two. We can easily move the bushes and add some more pea gravel, and then get four spots, and we'll go through the process with Deb to do that. But that's our plan down the line, so.
Okay. But with that said, you're gonna add the four, the two cars, but your occupancy does not change?
Sure. Just, just for traffic, view traffic.
Okay. Sam, sorry, go ahead.
No problem. Yeah, I'd like to just comment to the, is it the Marion's? Is that how you pronounce it?
Yep.
Okay. I've been only involved in the town council for a short, short period of time, and I want to say upfront that I'm opposed to expanding any further short-term rentals in the community. I've been here since 2004, and we've seen a lot of disruption in a peaceful environment that we have grown to love in Michigan Shores. And I just want you to know that the town is serious about enforcement and enforcement of all the regulations about noise, fireworks. I've seen it all. I've seen public urination by renters, and it's just, it's just something that I'm passionately opposed to. I'm passionately in favor of keeping Michigan Shores the way it's been and in a nice, peaceful, quiet community living. So, that being said, you know, you know your responsibilities as the owners, and we'll hopefully not have any problems. But be aware that the town is concerned about some of the problems that have been brought in as a result of short-term rentals. And it's not just Michigan Shores. You read about all the, all the various Airbnb problems that have-- that have happened throughout the country, so it's real and it's here in Michiana Shores as well, and we want, we want your full cooperation.
Understood, thank you.
Any other comments? Would I make this a conditional approval, once we locate the $150 of application fee?
Yeah, approval contingent on confirmation.
Do I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the short-term rental application for permit at.
412.
For 412, under conditions that we confirm, the permit fee has been made.
Any comment, Rich?
I guess, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes and where else?
Okay, goddamn.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving forward to number nine, departmental reports, Police Chief Brooks.
Good evening, everyone, for the month of February, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 230 calls for service, when compared to 132 calls for service in the previous year for an increase of 92 calls for service. During the month, 18 incident reports were documented with 12 individuals that were arrested, one felony arrest for family operating motor vehicle intoxicated, 11 misdemeanor arrests, six individuals were arrested for operating motor vehicle intoxicated, a total of six misdemeanor arrests for traffic-related offenses. Overall, for the month, our staff stayed very active. Specific to the town of Michiana Shores, I would like to note on February 15th, Deputy Mitchell Sykes responded to Pachetran Drive reference an unresponsive male. We have a history of responding to this residence for prior narcotics violations and family domestication. Upon arrival, Deputy Mitchell Sykes located the father holding his 42-year-old son upright in a chair in the kitchen. The male was unresponsive and non-verbal. Taking into account the previous drug history at that home, Deputy Sykes administered one dose of Narcan to the nasal passage. Upon the arrival of medical staff, the male then became responsive. It should be noted that the male was recently, I'm sorry, released from the county jail after we had arrested him just weeks earlier for drug possession as a level six felony. On this particular evening, no drugs were located in the home, and we took a case report for future reference as well. Aside from that, we'll increase the traffic patrols, especially along L Portal now that the weather has begun to improve, and we'll also be placing our radar trailer out sometime in the next two months as well. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
Well, for the month of February, we spent 192.26 hours on everything. We had four meetings during the month. During the month, we had seven calls and one call in Michiana Shores, everywhere else is worse than this. So, if you notice, out of the truck bay, the meeting halls, we made a new flooring put in here, and a new paint job, we're tired of painting for the maintenance on this floor, so hopefully within the next month or so, before the next meeting, we may have it in, don't know for sure yet. So, but the whole station interior is gonna be painted.
Right.
Thank you so much.
All done, Sam.
All right, Building Commissioner, Code Enforcement, Deb Chubb.
Yeah, emailed a report out, not much to report, few building permits issued, a stack recorder issued, fine was paid, and issue was resolved within 48 hours.
Okay, any questions from the council members? Dinah, Sam?
No, no comments on that, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. I don't see Dolly Millick here, I don't think she's on virtually as well, so we'll bypass the park board unless someone has something to report.
Just that they have a meeting this month.
Excuse me?
Just that they have a meeting this month.
Are you doing the share?
March 27th.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, next up, Road Commissioner, Bob Sikelski.
Well, happy to report, I guess happy to report, first time in 45 years, we've only plowed snow for hours in February.
Isn't that nice?
That's funny.
Maybe, oh, that's true.
Excellent.
Hey, Bob, I did have a question, when the, now that the ground is kind of warming up a little bit, any idea or plans for just random potholes throughout the town?
Probably when it warms up a little bit.
All right, my mother-in-law was out there.
Stuff doesn't work well.
My mother-in-law told me that the roads were little, had little potholes, so I thought I'd mention it in the meeting, so my job's done. So, we'll look for an update throughout the year, so, thank you.
Advisory Planning Commission, Ralph Box.
We didn't have any, thought you'd come to us for the permits at the last meeting. As I said, we did vote on the comprehensive plan, moved it forward to the town council. We are also working on potential updates to the rules surrounding short-term rentals. We're slowly working through the ideas, trying to digest those. So it'll be probably a couple more months before we have a solid list that we can discuss more.
Okay, thank you. Nothing from BCA, Matt Bowen is not present. White Ditch Drainage Board, Dinah Dunbries, any update? Dinah?
I keep, I keep muting, I keep muting myself so you wouldn't hear my little guest for the week, okay? Anyway, White Ditch, I reported to them about various branches and an entire fir tree that is in the creek or in the ditch, east of Pocahonti, Pocahonti and the Michigan shoreline. So the LeBourne County Drainage is just proposing that they send through a crew that will clean those kind of branches up and off of those, you know, the actual banks that are actually falling and slipping, because there's more than just that, those are likely to fall right in. So anyway, we'll be waiting to hear from them on when they do that, but that's, that's what's going on with regards to the drainage board.
Got it, thank you. Website Samantha Arnold, guessing no, and then NERC C would be you again, Dinah.
Okay, no report today, there's a meeting Thursday morning, so I will be at that and have some news from that for the next meeting.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Moving on to number 10, unfinished business, addition of name of town to the notice board near stop 37. My notes picked me from wrong, Ralph, we were gonna look into this?
Uh, yeah, if you guys remember, I had to go to two companies, a lot back, about potential signage. I didn't bring copies for everybody this time, because the last time, and the consensus was that we liked one particular option, and the question is about materials, so I happened to be in the O.R.S. over there today to stop by and get samples and materials. So, basically, the sign will be a white raised border and then raised wording, which is Michiana Shores, and depending on the element that we include, maybe something that is close to what's on the town signs, or our front, that will be raised as well. And the raised things would be this, it's a plastic, poly styrene kind of stuff, polyurethane, and then the backing would be metal, and then it would be, they won't print on there, it would be covered with a heavy-duty leather, that would really be the blue part, it's the background of the sign. So, I looked at some of the other stuff they have there, at least this is not available, but we do not, we can't go with a more sophisticated approach unless we go for a bigger sign, because their routing equipment can't do fine detail on the smaller sign, so we have to use a backplate like that. Prices around 600 bucks.
I think somebody had asked me, who was Sam, do you know what the lifespan on this type of material?
They said that they've been using it for 15 years and nobody's ever complained to me yet. But, you know, it's out in the elements. I would say that there's a lot, they've done a lot of work in communities around here, and in larger towns as well, there's a pretty big shop, good reputation.
Well, then, you know, why don't we take a look at making a decision on getting these things ready to go? Because springtime is here, we're gonna have traffic coming through, and we might as well identify ourselves.
Yeah, I realize it's not inexpensive, but the expectation is that the ARPA funds will cover this as part of the signs as well, so we don't have the eventual direct cost because it's part of the signage.
Okay. So you go, go ahead, Dinah.
Can the, I'm sorry, can the label, can this kind of name, this is part of those signs that we are getting through ARPA, so can the cost of these be applied to the ARPA funds as well, because it does name the town?
Ralph mentioned that already, yes, we were looking into it.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
No, you're fine.
The really outstanding thing would be for us to decide what we want the design element to look like. This guy just took the images I sent him to make something up. That's not necessarily what we want, it looks okay, but I think we have to spend a little more time deciding about that before we go off and spend some money. I'm not really sure how to proceed on that, I can continue to work on it and involve other people from the town council. I think all of us need to be engaged in the thought process, but anybody's welcome to just.
Just don't mean that me with him, because essentially what we do is we just verbally tap on kind of what we're looking for, that he creates it in the software, or gives us?
Yeah, he might have mentioned, send it back to us and approve it, so we can send a electronic invention, we can bounce it around if the moment changes.
Yeah. Yeah, just, I'll join those calls.
Okay, you know, I'll share it with the rest of the town council.
Yeah, because I like, I think we all agree that there's one that stuck out in terms of, of, you know, the positioning of it, but to your point, if you wanna spend some more time on the graphics itself and.
But they're probably, I hesitate spending more time on it unless we give it a go, because we're gonna do this. So, we probably uppropose that we vote
Yeah.
to proceed or not tonight, and then I can engage in more conversation.
Okay, now, if I'd like to interject here, now, you know, you showed us samples of it the last time around, and those are, that's a logo that the town has been using, you know, for some time. Is there any problem with using what was put on those, on those proposed, you know, mainboards? Do you foresee a need that it has to be changed in some way?
Uh, no, no, Dinah, I've been around a lot of graphics stuff in the past, and I haven't looked at this in great detail. My guess is the guy just made it up really quick, it might not be high enough for solution, I just don't know, it hasn't been the focus of my conversations with them. I wanted to get to this point before we got into that level of detail.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and if you didn't hear, Ralph and I were gonna try to join the call to get this squared away sooner rather than later, so, okay?
Sounds great, sounds great, thank you.
Thanks, Ralph, do you have any other comments or questions?
I'll ask Sam's thoughts on this.
Sam, any comments or questions regarding what we just discussed for the town sign?
No, I, I, I had input on the samples that were provided last time, and I think they, I think the logo that we've been using, as Dinah mentioned, is, I think it's recognizable and a good one, it's on sweatshirts and various other items, coffee mugs and whatnot, so hopefully we can use that and whatever finishes are the best that's gonna withstand some heavy weather, you know.
Got it. So do you wanna make a motion then to pursue this sign into greater details, to your point of saying you wanna go with them?
Well, I'd like to make sure we get Rich's comments.
Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead, Rich.
Lots of signs?
Yeah.
Sounds fine to me, yeah. The logo we've been using, there's nothing official about it.
Yes, there is.
There is?
Copyrighted, it's ours. They, that was done when we did the, I believe it was when they did something with the trio, with the sweatshirts, when they got the sweatshirts, it was designed.
Well, the first time. Wait, and that logo was on the backs? Wasn't it?
What? It might have been, but it, it, it is our logo and, right. That shouldn't be used, you know, by just anybody, we can use it, because it's ours.
That's a good point.
So we might wanna stick with it, it's nice, it shows what.
Yeah, I like it too, I just want to make sure it fits and looks right, and at least you kind of just put them during the drawings.
And it has color through it, it grabs people's attention.
Okay, do you wanna make a motion then to pursue?
I would like to make a motion to continue, and I guess Simcoe signs would be okay, that we're going to proceed with this project with them. I think the way it would work, Joan, is that we get a final quote from them after the conversations Michael and I had, and we get a final quote, and then we can proceed from there. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure.
What company are you working with?
Simcoe Signs.
Where are the?
Out of the horizon. Do we need to wait till we have a final firm quote before we vote on it?
Are you saying before you, say that again, you need to have a final what?
Firm quote. Joan?
Well, I said, I would vote, you know, to move forward and leave then the responsibility for the two of you, if you're gonna be talking about it, looking at it, for you and Michael to make the decision. You know, I think that Sam gave an opinion, I gave my opinion on this, and I think you guys, I don't know what Rich is saying on it, because I couldn't quite hear, but, you know, I would say let's just move forward with it. And then you can make the decision, whatever last final, you know, we know the price, approximately what it is, so just the final details, I'm looking at that photo, go ahead and move.
Okay, so I'll change my proposal to, I say that we vote on a approval of the Simcoe signs, proposed sign for the Sharon Shores, approximately 600 dollars.
Okay, sounds good to me.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just, you need a purchase order.
Yes, once we have the quote, I'll ask you to get a purchase order, right?
I need a purchase order.
All right, thank you, Ralph. Next up, we have an update on the MS4 designation, Dinah?
Yeah, okay, hi again, everybody. Reggie Portals came to give us a little bit of an update and information on the IDAM MS4 designation that our town fell under as last year, so I have sent various information out to you, so you would be able to see, Rich, I'm not even sure whether you got, you know, all the information, the paperwork. I know that she had brought more paperwork with her that day. I would like us, I mean, we were, we need to make our decision at the latest at our next meeting so that the next morning I could let them know how we're going with it. There are, I've still reached out to them, I haven't heard back, I have to follow up with phone calls, to two individuals who are working on this particular thing, you know, to find out that since we are so small, perhaps we may be able to just be out of it completely. I'll make another call to Reggie to hear from her, you know, what she says about what would be the, you know, let's say the negative, you know, points are not joining in with the MS4. So hopefully I'll be able to provide some more information, all of which I would share with you before the next meeting took place, so that we would be able to have a last discussion and make a decision. It does sound like it may help us to maintain a little bit more careful. more careful, maybe control of what takes place with regards to development, for instance, on our lakefront. It may also affect some of the development and stuff that takes place along the, um, uh, White Ditch because of water and runoff and what's taking place there. I don't know how much, but there are things that it, it might, you know, help with. It would also help us to apply for a certain number of grants that we are not able to, you know, apply for currently, so that, you know, it, it could be that this, it is going to be, um, a very small financial investment right now for the actual permitting, because of course they charge, it's like, I think they said 80 some dollars and it's for a five-year period. But there are going to be some reports that will have to be generated and one of our town members will have to be trained in some of the responsibilities that go along with being an MS4. So, you know, I know they have classes and various things taking place. So, anyway, um, there's some good, there's some bad, and we have to make a final decision whether we apply for the, you know, that we don't want to do it at all, we let them know and then if we apply to be, you know, taken off the list or we agree and then we move forward with all the things we have to do. And then there is quite a bit of time during the next five years during which we actually have to, you know, update some things and make some reports and so forth. So I hope they have all the answers for you in the next week so that I could, you know, put it all together in a document and then send it to you to read through. Okay?
Okay.
So Dinah, one of the options I think is to, uh, we are, we have been designated as MS4, right? So we have to do one of the three options.
Yes.
One of them is to plead that we're, we shouldn't be...
Correct.
Get an exemption. Is that correct?
Yes.
Or three?
Yes. I've, I've written to them with regards to that because we are so small. Because after reading and rereading the documentation, it's like, you know, they're talking communities under 1,000 and, and I wrote and I explained, I said, most of the year we're a community of maybe 250, you know, let alone under 1,000, you know, and how small we are, how little frontage we have on the lake and so forth, you know. Well, we'll see what they say, you know, on that part. So if you don't have any other questions, that's all I have on this.
All right. Thanks, Dinah. Um, moving forward, the new 11A, since we did move up the refuse contract at the beginning of the meeting, um, this is a spring letter for 2023, uh, just an update that there will be one going out in the next couple of weeks with various topics. I believe Dinah did send out, uh, some emails to get some information and input from you. Uh, I think one of the biggest things that's going to be, uh, shared is that we have our spring leaf pickup dates, um, already confirmed. They will be April 10th and April 1st, um, and at which time we will educate our members to, our residents to remove the small twigs and branches so that they don't, uh, damage any of the leaf vacuums and/or their equipment as they come around. Um, so be on the lookout for that within the next couple of weeks. Anything to add, Dinah?
Yes. And then just, uh, please to remind everybody to, do not place leaves onto the street. Bring them up to the edge of the pavement. So, and as well, just a reminder, because we had some residents who had contractors working for them and they actually placed their leaves, the contractors did, across Michiana Drive and onto Michigan State property. Um, the Village of Michiana was not happy with that taking place. I approached the homeowners and a couple of them were very, you know, very gladly complied and I have not heard back from two of them, so, uh, with regards to that. So, but the Village of Michiana did reach out to us several times regarding this particular issue. So just make sure that nothing like that takes place, you know, going forward.
Got it. Thank you. All right. Moving on to number 12, the attorney report, Mr. Gamski.
First and general, there's, uh, fines and citations that are going to move forward to legal. I've had communication with Deb of one particular gentleman and I just got some citations sent last week. I need to follow up on her or follow up with Deb on, um, they look older and then I heard reference in the billing to other legal that was already being involved with that name, so I just need clarification. I'll, I'll reach out to Deb this week and find that out. Um, on the sewer connection, to give you all an update on that, basically Michigan City revised their, um, ordinance or their regulations on that to loosen it up. Basically, for somebody to tap into it now, they just have to say not that they're agreeing to annex, but they're, they're not going to object to annexation if that happens at some point in the future. You'll remember Mr. Perrin was in previously, his attorney reached out to us. They've been in touch with City of Michigan City as far as what they need to do to get permission from the city to tap in. One of the requirements the city's put on them is that the town council, you guys would ultimately, at some point, have to vote to say that you're allowing them to tap in. The way I read the memorandum of understanding from that point, I've talked with my partner Doug about this as well, the town then kind of serves as a pass through. There's a fee that the person tapping in has to pay to recover the costs from the original construction. They would issue that to the town, but the town would basically turn around and issue that back out to the receiving party for the additional costs of the construction. And then by understanding, Michigan City would actually then be managing the, the new tapping.
And when you say tapping, will they be doing the future maintenance and, and as well?
Yeah. The, the town still owns the, the line.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the city would be making it. The city will be... So, um, that's...
The city will what? I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
It wasn't clear.
The city would be servicing it.
The city, Michigan City will be servicing, uh, the sewer and the sewer hookup.
Okay. All right. Now I'm going to ask a question. Now this is happening for the parents. Will this same service be provided for, I don't know how many other people can tap into that line there?
The original MOU looked like there were seven potential tap-ins on that line.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
So it's not on the agenda, so I don't know that it's appropriate to take action on it tonight, but eventually they're going to be asking that you get to vote to give them permission so that they can move forward with Michigan City. So, um, recently Long Beach went through a similar process and literally all, all Michigan City needed was an email from the Long Beach attorney saying that the board had approved it. So...
Okay.
Not take a lot of thought, but I'm part of it, that motion and vote approved.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I was still at this, I was on this council when we approved the building and led the building. But, you know, am I not correct? We never did take official ownership of that sewer.
And as far as having anything, like ordinance that...
I remember doing the one on the board that kept saying, you know, and Attorney Gunning was, you know, right behind us saying, you know, that we have to take ownership of this and so to that, I swear.
It's in the MOU though. If you read the MOU, it's in the memorandum of understanding.
Yeah.
You should have a copy of it. I think I gave you a copy.
I'm the one that gave you a couple of those copies because you were looking for them back then, I think. But anyway...
Anyway, I took them out of the file. They're, they're in a special file.
Attorney Gunning kept saying that we need to get this clarified and...
I, I agree with Rich. And then maybe that is something that should be discussed at an executive session since it's a legal issue. Uh, Brad, your thoughts?
Yeah.